It is six thirty on Monday, February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Um, the first line item is our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from, um, January twenty second. Kathy, do you remember if, uh, all of us were here?
I was not here. I was absent.
You were not here, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We're gonna need to table because, um, Jen wasn't here and we don't have a second. Thank you. Visitors comment?
Can I just say-
Absolutely.
As president of the Granby Educators Association Unit, I would like to thank the school committee because whenever, um, I need to speak up during your meeting, you allow me to and you also defer to me on other things. After attending a couple of presidents, academy, or, and meetings, I'm finding that it's not always that way in other towns. So I just want you to know how much I appreciate it and make sure that others know that I'm allowed to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. And you're absolutely right. Many committees will see their meeting as their business meeting and except for allocated time, they will not. But we only have so many opportunities to, to interact and get some of the feedback. Uh, you know, if we were this huge, uh, district with tons of stuff, probably we could've, you know, talked about some of the process, but we appreciate whenever you have some, uh, some feedback input, so. And thank you for sharing that with us.
That's all right. Thank you.
Um, so, under new business, we have two items. Um, the first one is with Joe Shea from Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, and he's gonna be joining us and he's gonna, uh, share with us a presentation and then lots of knowledge.
That's right.
Great.
Thanks for having me.
Sure.
And, um, I've been going out to a number of the units that are part of-
Did you wanna come and join us here?
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to really, yeah.
Mary, if you didn't mind, if you go through the slides. Uh, again, I've been going out to a number of units actually since about April, uh, once we started looking at what our benefits were and some of the changes, uh, just to, uh, help try to educate, uh, folks about the trust and the changes that we were looking at and talking about. Um, and so the first slide is just really an overview of the trust where we're a self-insured insurance trust, which means that we assume all the risks and liabilities of the trust. As you know, you may have a Blue Cross Blue Shield card. We hire Blue Cross Blue Shield just basically to adjudicate our claims and we use their services or their contracts with hospitals and doctors. But again, if there's a loss or profit, it's the trust that assumes that loss and profit. So Granby is one of seventy units that participates in the trust. So again, we have a good year. Granby participates in that good year. We have a bad year. Granby participates in the bad year as well. So again, we assume the risks and liabilities of all the claims that come in, come in the door. Uh, we happen to be the second largest joint purchase trust in the state. The largest is MIA. Again, and this is based on the number of units. And we have over eleven thousand lives covered within the trust. Uh, it's probably closer to twelve thousand. And as I mentioned earlier, Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, we hire them to process our claims and we utilize, um, uh, all of their, uh, contracts with, again, the doctors and hospitals. So we sort of private label, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield for the trust. The way the trust is set up, I report into a nine-member executive committee and all seventy units have a voting share in the insurance advisory committee. Uh, the, the executive committee meets on a monthly basis with the insurance advisory committee meeting on a quarterly basis. And again, the executive committee, based on my recommendations, uh, will look at benefits and premiums for the year and those recommendations are then moved up to the insurance advisory committee to make the final votes.
Joe, did you say you execute the trust?
Excuse me. Uh, yeah, I'm the, the insurance director of the trust, yes. And the products that we offer are just the HMO, PPO, and the MedX two. Uh, MedX two is for retirees sixty-five and over that are eligible. Uh, we process or we, our premium annualizes between sixty-seven and sixty million, sixty-seven to sixty-eight million dollars a year. We're located in Northampton. Uh, there's myself and a staff of three others in Northampton. Uh, basically, we, we definitely ask people if they're, they have questions on their insurance or if they're even having a problem with their claims to call our office versus Blue Cross Blue Shield, even though on the card there's one eight-hundred number. You're, you're more than likely gonna get a better and quicker answer from, um, our staff in Northampton than you are with Blue Cross instead of sitting there counting through a bunch of numbers to try to get to a warm body. You'll get to a warm body generally on the, on the first try with our staff. Uh, this page is just, uh, sort of history going back to two thousand of what the, what our rate increases have been going back to two thousand. Uh, going back that far, um, early in the, early in the two thousands, there were some very, very significant, uh, rate increases. There was one year in particular that they had, uh, two rate increases in the same year, two thousand and two. They had one in July and then another one in September. Things settled down in the, the middle of the, from two thousand five through two thousand and ten, more of the seven to eight, nine percent increase. And then two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fourteen, we had this wonderful time period of no rate increases. And not only did we not have any rate increases, uh, the claim experience ran extremely well. We were able to actually bank more money, putting it away into our premium reserve during that same time period. And then in two thousand and five and, and going forward, uh, we started seeing our claims going up. Um, they, they, they significantly started jumping, uh, in sixteen through, uh, the time period right now. And, uh, we'll get to what the, the rate increases are for, uh, the insurance here starting July first in a few minutes. And here's just a snapshot of just our net assets of the trust dating back to two thousand and fourteen. Again, it's very simple. It, it shows our assets and the liabilities. And really, the, the line that you should concentrate on is the very last one, the total net assets. Basically, uh, that's our reserve that we have. So if you look in insurance here, two thousand and fourteen, we had twenty-seven million dollars of, of excess cash or reserve. Um, and then if you fast forward to two thousand and seventeen, June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, that has been reduced to eighteen million dollars, eighteen point seven. So in that time period, the trust actually lost eight to nine million dollars. And how did we lose eight to nine million dollars over that four years? Basically, it's subsidizing the rates because the claims started jumping. Um, pharmaceutical expenses actually doubled in that four-year time period from approximately six million dollars a year to twelve million dollars a year in that four-year time period. And also in that time period, we, uh, had Affordable Care Act taxes, uh, that were basically unknown to you. But again, um, those taxes had to be paid on every single subscriber and we paid approximately a million three out in Affordable Care taxes to the federal government. The trust didn't benefit from it, but it was law and we had to make those payments. And that was another million dollars, a million dollars plus that came out of the, the reserves during that same time period. And then there was just the natural inflationary pressures just on, on claims themselves. Again, the biggest culprit in that four-year time period were pharmaceutical expenses. And the next page is the, um, the changes that are going to, into effect on July first, which is the middle column. And what we've, uh, decided on and was voted on, uh, last year was to institute a number of co-pays, um, whether it was increasing the emergency room co-pay from seventy-five to a hundred, then instituting co-pays for hospital admissions, outpatient surgery, imaging, and then also add, adding in a, a, a small deductible on pharmaceuticals, or, uh, pharmaceuticals purchased at the retail level. So if you're going into the store and buying a thirty-day supply versus if you're on a maintenance drug and being able to get it, um, uh, through mail order, again, there's a small deductible being instituted, um, for, again, the retail level purchases. And the, the, the way we ended up with these particular changes, we started these discussions over two years ago with both the executive committee and the insurance advisory committee and basically getting their input on what they thought, um, would be bearable for, for benefit changes. Again, the trust had never had any benefit change, um, other than a five-dollar co-pay change back in two thousand. They'd never had a, again, a benefit change at all. Um, and we basically landed on these just because they matched up with, um, with, basically what the GIC was charging and a lot of other municipal insurance, um, uh, group, purchase groups that are out there right now. Um, the big difference between, let's say, this, these changes here and the GIC is the GIC actually has a medical deductible. So, um, again, on a single person, there's a five-hundred-dollar deductible and a family plan, a thousand-dollar deductible, which means you pay your first, if you're a single person, you pay your first five-hundred dollars of expenses out of pocket before your insurance ever kicked in. Our plan does not have that at all. The only thing that we have, again, are the co-pays that you see here and the deductible on the pharmacies. And again, this was something that was two years in the making. Um, we finally landed on pretty much what we thought we were going to vote on back in April of two thousand and seventeen. We put it to a vote in July of, uh, two thousand and seventeen. It was nowhere near unanimous. Uh, there was a lot of discussion that went on, um, at the meeting. Uh, probably the biggest pain point was the third line item down was the office specialist visit of forty dollars. What was voted on in July was a sixty-dollar specialist visit. And again, that was probably the biggest pain point from the July meeting. Uh, there was a number of, uh, groups that did ask, could we take a hard look at that? Could we adjust that in any way, shape, or form? Uh, we did work with Blue Cross Blue Shield and asked, um, if we did that, uh, how much of less of a savings would we see? And it was only about a half of a percent, uh, of a savings. So we then brought it to, uh, back to the insurance advisory committee in our October meeting and adjusted it from sixty down to forty dollars. And then, uh, the notations out there for, uh, therapy, therapy visits, uh, those were the, other couple of things that we did tweak from the July meeting. Uh, just because we know, uh, physical therapy, occupational speech therapy, you're usually not just going once, you're going a number of times. So if we had that at a sixty-dollar co-pay or even a forty-dollar co-pay, um, that would, um, those expenses would rapidly add up for a subscriber. So again, we did carve that out. So those kind of therapy visits, um, would be only at the, uh, office visit level of twenty dollars. So again, uh, this was what was voted on in July, subsequently tweaked in October and, um, basically unratified by the insurance advisory committee. Those changes that you see there effective July first, uh, based on the actuaries at Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, those, those alone should save the trust, uh, from a premium perspective, about five and a half percent. It's actually five point four or five percent. So if we didn't make those changes, the premiums that you're gonna see, uh, in a minute would be five point four, five, five point four or five percent higher than what they would've been. Now, this is a lot of numbers and, um, it's just, the, these ones are really based on, um, working with the actuaries at Blue Cross Blue Shield where, uh, if you see A, B, C, and D, they're just different scenarios. Uh, the A scenario that you see is, uh, the actuaries at Blue Cross, they're the closest to our claims. So they know how our claims are running. They, they know the detail on them. They know how many, let's say, new heart attacks, uh, rolled in over the last month, how many new cancer cases. So, they looked at that and would tell us, basically gave us what they expected the claim rates would be, which is the column, um, expected claim rates, um, where it shows six, forty-two, forty, starting in that column. And then we have admin fees and reinsurance premium. Where admin fees, we, we, like I mentioned earlier, we, we pay Blue Cross Blue Shield to adjudicate our claims. So there's a fee for that, a monthly fee for that. Reinsurance premium, um, we reinsure the trust for any large claims. So again, uh, we don't want to pay out, um, on million-dollar claims. So we go out and purchase reinsurance for those. And a perfect example on that is, we have one claim that just came off our books in December, December first. Uh, it'd been running for two years, um, and each of the past two years, it was a million five. Um, so we had reinsurance in place for either two-hundred-and-fifty or two-hundred-and-seventy-five thou, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, where the trust was responsible for the first two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, uh, in two years ago. And then this past year, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, where we were responsible for those first two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of expenses. Anything that above that, the reinsurer would reimburse us. So in that particular case, that one claim of the million five, we paid the first two-fifty, um, and received credit back where the reinsurer was responsible for the next million and a quarter. So again, we purchase reinsurance to protect the trust from any large claims, um, out there. So when you factor all that in, you go to the right-hand column of the projected rates, just how our claims are running right now. The actuaries basically would say that we would need to increase our single HMO rate by eighteen percent, uh, single plus one, thirteen percent, and on the way down, uh, into the PPOs of nine and four percent respectively. Then, yeah, under the B category, they then sort of projected everything out and they actually said our claims were running slightly better, or they thought our claims would run slightly better next year, um, to the tune of about one point eight percent. So if you go out to that far right-hand column, projected rate again, we've adjusted the, uh, the percentage of the, the rate increase accordingly based on actuarial expectations. If you go to section C, this is where we're factoring in the five point four or five percent savings. So it keeps driving down, again, on the far right side, uh, what the premium increases would, would be. And it's interesting, the PPO family, actually, you'd see about a two percent reduction, uh, when you start factoring in, um, uh, the savings from the benefit changes. And then, section D is, uh, last year, one of the other things that we, we looked at was because our pharmaceutical expenses were, were rising so dramatically, um, we did hire a consultant, uh, to look at the discounts and rebates that are out there that basically bounce between the insurance company and the pharmacy benefit manager. And we wanted to make sure that we were getting the best discounts possible from Blue Cross Blue Shield and the pharmacy benefit manager. And that consultant said, if we were getting good discounts, they could be better. So he was charged with negotiating better rates for us. And, uh, subsequently, we, we signed off on a contract right at the very end of, uh, in the, in December of two thousand and seventeen uh, that would, uh, basically see our, uh, discounting, uh, improve to the point where we were able to factor in about a one point two to one point five percent savings um, on the, on the, uh, rates for next year. So again, when you get to, to section D, we're still at nine point six and four point eight and, and actually a four point, four percent reduction in PPO. One sheet that I didn't provide here is, as I look at cash, I like cash. I like to see cash coming in the door and cash going out the door. And, uh, we can break it down by product, whether it's the HMO or PPO. And, you know, based on the cash coming in and out, the HMO was actually running a little better than what the actuaries have told me. And the PPO actually was running a little less, a little worse than, uh, what the, the actuaries were telling me. So, a lot of numbers. So then we, basically, I basically make a recommendation to the executive committee. And if you could go to the next page. What was recommended to the, the executive committee is the very top section of, uh, rate increases of four point nine, four seven, four one, and then the threes, uh, for the PPO. That was what I was recommended, recommending. And after discussions with the executive committee, what they approved was what you see in the gold section, uh, basically having the single and the plus-one plan coming in at four point seven and then four point one for the family plan and then the PPOs, three point three and the three O. To the far right-hand side is the, the, the change is what they, what the percentage increases would've been if we did not make these benefit changes. So basically, all you're doing is taking five point four or five, adding it to your four seven to come to the ten percent. So again, if, if we did not make these benefit changes, we were probably looking at, uh, rate increases like we saw last year, which were in the nine to ten percent range, um, across the board. I know it's a lot of information in about a five-minute overview, but-
Can you go back to the previous slide for a second?
Yeah, you can go back to the previous slide. What, what I would actually sort of zero in on is, is what the actuaries in section B, um, you know, they're projecting that our rate should be significantly higher on the PPO side, you know, in the sixteen to, to ten percent range. Uh, but again, we've made the benefit changes, which helped drive it down, um, into, into the section C range of ten point nine and the six, the four percent range.
Are these, um, the numbers of subscribers?
Yes, 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 the number, those are the number of subscribers.
So it looks, well, a couple of things. One is, looks like HMO is preferred by most people, so they are, right?
Yes, yes.
Um, and you said, the direction of increases change a little bit. It became a little more favorable for HMO and less favorable for PPO.
Right.
But it looks like, uh, at, at least that they, in the case of the single, the top one, it went down to four point seven, right? Um, four point seven plus four point seven. And then the bottom one went up a little bit. But for PPO, it went up fairly substantially. In fact, in one case, from four percent decrease, it went up by three percent or so?
Yes, yes, yes. And, and the anomaly with the PPO is, we've, we, we have a number of units and you're, you're not one of them, um, that don't allow folks to have a, a PPO or offer a PPO. This is the first year, I've been in this role for six years and it's the first time the PPO actually ran well. Because historically, the PPO always runs worse than the HMO. The reason for that is, you don't need to, uh, have a referral from your doctor. I mean, if you wanted to go see a specialist-
Right.
-under the PPO plan, you can walk in and see a specialist every single day of the week. So historically, our rates, or, our rates have always been higher than the HMO. But that's because the claims have always been historically, uh, far worse than the HMO.
Yeah.
And this is the first year that actually the PPO looked better on paper than the HMO.
Yeah, so you-
So, so I don't really trust the, the numbers that you see here.
Okay.
Even though, even though, again, bottom line, um, you know, under the D scenario, we could be looking at a four percent rate decrease if we, if we believe these numbers.
Yeah. I mean, that was one of the drivers, but I was also wondering, given that PPO allows you to go without-
Right, and then again-
I was wondering why you don't see some, some more people in that category.
Oh, in the PPO category?
Yeah.
Well, again, it's the pricing where, again, um, right now, our rates-
And for family, it's not really that dramatic. It's forty dollars, forty-five dollars difference.
Well, again, i- if you go to up, like, our current, current rate between, uh, a, a, a family HMO is seventeen forty-six versus nineteen thirty-five. So, so there's almost a two-hundred-dollar difference per month in the HMO and PPO. And, and quite frankly, in this day and age, uh, the people that are, a lot of the people that are in the PPO, um, still just have the, the thought processes way back when HMOs was sort of a, um, a, a bad word in the sense that, uh, you know, it might've been a small regional HMO and you had to use them. And, and in this day and age, uh, if you have a, your physician and you need to see a specialist, that they, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they're gonna give you that referral to, to see the specialist.
Yeah, yeah. How do these rates compare to the overall increases, uh, in Massachusetts?
Um, well, we're waiting to see the, the GIC. I was talking with Mary and, and if, if you've been s- watching the papers over the last few weeks with the GIC, um, it's, it's, uh, they're still hoping to come in at about a five percent, uh, rate increase. But, um, they were looking to get rid of half of the insurance carriers that they had and, um, there was a big, you know, storm about that and they added them back in. So we're waiting to see if they're gonna change their benefits and what their premiums are gonna look like. Uh, again, the biggest thing with the GIC is, um, uh, again, the medical deductible that they have in play that we don't have here at all. And then comparing ourselves to a lot of the other local joint purchase groups, probably one of the closest ones would be, uh, there's, uh, Scantic Valley, which has, uh, East Long Meadow and Long Meadow. Um, and then there's one up in Amherst. And, um, what I've told the executive committee and the insurance advisory committee is that we're still in great financial shape, which is, is great. But when you look at some of these other ones, Amherst is, is probably the, the biggest one that, um, they went south very, very fast. They've actually approached the, our, our trust to enter into our trust because three years old, I think it was actually two years ago, they had about a seven-million-dollar reserve and if you, based on what you read in the paper, they're down to zero. And they had a ten percent increase in October and another twelve percent increase effective February first. So they've had two increases in, uh, just in this insurance year alone. And that's just to keep them out of the red. So, I mean, they've blown through all of their reserves. So again, um, it's, uh, the marketplace is still very volatile. Um, I think the, the rates have stabilized somewhat. Uh, I don't think we'll be seeing anybody announcing double-digit kind of increases, but, um, probably still be in the mid, mid to high single digits.
What was it last year?
Uh, the HMO was nine point four and the PPO was ten, ten-something, ten point, ten point four, ten point eight. There's ten point eight. Oh, you have it there. Oh, yeah, yes. So, um, so again, the reasoning behind the, um, the, the main reason behind the tweaking of the benefits was just because, uh, we, we just heard the number of municipalities saying that they couldn't sustain ten percent increases for a number of years where it was gonna be a strain on the budgets. So whether it was for school or, um, or for the, you know, the municipal budget, um, it was, it was the same.
I think last year was our biggest-
Yes.
-increase on the incurring side, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, we, we sort of saw that happening two years ago and started having those discussions about, well, what can we do? And, uh, what, what was, I guess, agreeable or, or what's, what are the changes that, uh, we, we thought folks were more comfortable taking? And the very first thing was co-pays. Uh, that what they did not want was a full medical deductible like you see in, in the GIC or some of the other plans that are out there.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, so, do there's no, sorry, the Granby teachers, they have no medical deductible in their insurance?
No, no. And up until July, until, until July first, they didn't even have co-pays other than their fifteen or twenty-dollar co-pay or if they had an emergency room visit. Other than that, it, you know, it-
I have almost two years and, yeah.
If you're in the hospital and ran up a thirty-thousand-dollar bill, it would cost you zero.
It's amazing. Even the, the changes, I've worked in healthcare for almost twenty years and I've not seen healthcare plans that good in probably about ten years.
No, uh, and, uh, just, just, just talk with me. I, I, I have a, my, my oldest is twenty-eight and, uh, she switched jobs and she sent me snapshots of what her plan looks like and said, welcome to the railroad.
Nothing like that, yeah.
Uh, and, uh-
It's good. Our teachers need that. That's a good thing.
No, and, and, you know, the, the big pushback is, 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 again, it's, it's something new. I mean, there's co-pays involved and, um, you know, and, and we did tweak them from June, or from the July meeting to the October meeting and tweak them, you know, a little bit more, um, when it came to the, the physical therapy and clinical therapies as well, so.
I've seen a hundred and fifty-dollar co-pays for specialists.
Well, in the GIC, um, again, the GIC had, had ten, um, listening sessions when they first announced they were, they were eliminating the, uh, three of the carriers. And I went to the one in Springfield and person after person went up there and some of their plans actually have tierings, so you pay more depending on what hospital you went to. And a number of the folks, uh, were saying that, uh, their co-pays were ninety dollars a pop.
Sure.
And, and on top of it, the only doctors that were available in Boston, so you had to also go to Boston and then pay ninety dollars on top of it, so.
It's crazy.
I don't know, I haven't seen an HMO in years offered. What's that? So I haven't even seen an HMO offered to me in years. It's just been, but it's high deductible. Oh, plans, yes, yeah, yeah. No, so again, even with these changes, this, I would categorize still as benefit-rich. Plan that we have that we're currently in that'll wind down by July first is crazy benefit-rich in the sense that, uh, that you're always just writing maybe a fifteen-dollar check and that's it. And, you know, um, and I've heard at some of the meetings that I've gone out to, oh, it's cost-sharing. And I go, well, yes, in a way it is. But when you see, um, let's say, the pharmaceutical expense double in, in, in four years, um, you know, the, the, the trust is absorbing that, uh, using the reserves. We are lucky that we, our reserve is built up as much as it was. Um, so we were fortunate that we could draw it down on that and subsidize the rates accordingly for the last three years. Um, but we needed to tweak it somewhat, um, so we don't find ourselves like some of the other joint purchase groups in the state.
So that was a question I have. Is there a target percentage of reserve that you try to have?
Um, rule of thumb for, for the waters that, that don't get them nervous is if you have approximately three months of, of, of claims in the bank. And three months of claims in the bank would be about thirteen, fourteen million. So we're actually over-reserved by about a month. So we're still in, in, in great shape. Where four years ago, where we had twenty-seven million dollars, there's no way, even though some people said, oh, you should've still raised your rates maybe one or two percent just to keep people used to having a rate increase. But I couldn't justify, as the, the piggy bank kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger, how you justify a rate increase. And because at that point in time, we had, you know, six-plus months worth of the claim reserve built up. Um, you know, so we've been drawing it down a little faster than I'd like. Um, so, you know, and then with these changes and, um, you know, and, and hoping that claims stabilize somewhat, you know, we really won't know how we're doing until this time next year.
And these rates that you're sharing will be the basis of what the town's gonna be using for its FY nineteen?
Yes, so, so for budget, yeah, so for budget purposes, whether it's for the school or for the town, uh, the, the rates that you saw on the last page, the four point seven, um, are the rates, four point seven and, uh, four point one for the family plan and then the three point three and three- And then the three point three and three point oh for the PPO is what you can use for your budget. Because those are locked and and approved.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you very much for coming, really appreciate it.
You're backing me up. Again, the more folks that hear the same message, um the better. Um and and again, what we hope to do in May is when we have the open enrollment, um it was three or four years ago when we changed our medex plan, we had a lot we had a lot of uh sort of open sessions sort of in the area. Um and what we'd like to do is have something similar, so um any subscribers can come and ask questions. Even though the changes really are sort of self-explanatory, but uh sometimes people get nervous when they see that there's a a copayment and what does that mean? Um because they immediately think there's a deductible and there is no deductible on the medical side, there is a small deductible on the pharmaceutical side.
Yeah, just to uh confirm, that what we see in that uh two thousand nineteen rate
Right.
column, those are monthly?
That's the the full one hundred percent rate. So we we will bill uh the the town of Granby with that full rate. Uh what we don't know and really um don't wanna say don't care, but we have seventy units and everybody's contributions are different. So um so you know, your your contribution is gonna be different than let's say East Hampton. So that's the full hundred percent rate that we'll bill each of the communities.
Per subscriber?
Per subscriber, correct.
Okay.
And then you'll do the payroll deductions from there based on where your contributions are.
Okay, so it is possible that family a family uh is paying, I don't know, close to two thousand dollars per month?
Well, no, because you you pay or you-
No.
It seems the town currently pays sixty four percent of the family plan and seventy four percent of individual plans.
Okay, I just I wanted to
Yeah.
I wanted to understand the p- uh full cost first, but that's the full cost, the how it's split, that it happens after, you know, the town takes care of it.
That that that's the full cost. Right. Right. Right.
Yeah, yeah. Sure. Okay. Anything else? No. All right, thank you so much for coming, I appreciate it, Joe.
Great. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Yes, we'll see you tomorrow.
Joe will be here tomorrow uh to speak with staff and give the same presentation, so anybody's welcome to uh to come.
Now that we know the numbers, we can just, you know, show off, just like.
You can or you could do the presentation part. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Okay, moving on to the second item on under new business, facilities use policy.
Yes, so um in coming across some of the facilities use uh forms and policy, um the school committee is uh supposed to have a fee schedule. And so I had asked around and around and apparently there was a fee schedule and then there wasn't a fee schedule. And so I did wanna bring it forward. Um I gave some fee schedule examples from um some surrounding communities um so that the school committee can certainly consider um and have a a discussion uh probably next time about uh establishing a fee schedule, which may be zero for usage and what we currently do, which is the any expense for custodial staff or cleaning staff or cafeteria workers. Um but there are other towns that do um have fee facility fee uh fees for like um for profit. So um considering that we have the new building opening um in September, that may um spark some interest in using the auditorium, the cap- the the gym auditorium because the stage is beautiful. I just saw it the other day. Um but I think it's it's a good time for us to consider um re-establishing what the fee schedule is and getting it uh out to folks.
Yeah, I I agree. Uh I actually don't know how much of our custodian uh wages cover any additional cost of having a room open with, you know, power and everything else, so.
Right. Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good idea to consider it. And I like the fact that you're bringing up uh you know, the building next door, there may be more interest in
Yep.
uh using uh that facility, so.
Mm-hmm.
Let's let's talk about it.
So the information is there and I'll keep it on the agenda as old business
Yeah.
next time.
Do we do you ha- do you have a timeline as to when you would like to do something?
I do not, um certainly uh probably before the new building opens, um just so we can get it clear.
Okay.
Um yeah.
Okay.
Um Kathy, when do the new contracts usually come, in June or July?
Yeah, usually, yeah, June, July, we we draw the-
Right, so our our repeat customers um that use our facilities,
Yeah.
we typically start receiving those requests in June and July. So if we could have it just before that, it would probably be helpful.
Yeah. Are those contracts, do you think those contracts um will be affected by any of these considerations? That there's a new facility needs to be maintained?
Um most of them are not for profit
They are.
on community organizations, so I would say no.
Okay, that makes sense.
Um unless the committee um wanted to consider the cost of heating, you know, he- additional heating or light if, you know, they were using a part of the building that would normally be closed.
Um I mean, we we can talk about that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um but for a couple of reasons, one is that they're nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh number two, they're from the town and we always say that this is
Right. Yep.
a community center, so uh but it it never hurts to have the conversation, at least for transparency uh transparency's sake
Yeah.
so that, you know, we can we can discuss all those options. Okay, so are you gonna bring this back next week or?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. Cool.
Thank you for that. That's all we have under new business, um
It's excellent.
Uh including old business?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um I believe so.
All right, so let's just uh go over the old business strategic plan and review.
On the agenda.
We have a follow-up meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
Did you wanna say more or?
Uh well, the plan is being put together. Um it currently has the new mission and vision, it has four strategies. Um the committee last time met to discuss um action steps in each of the areas. And um we're putting that all together right now so that it can be uh presented tomorrow night. And then we're also going to present it to school councils so that we can get some input from school councils um and then have a final version um soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, we're trying to have this in place before we start working on our budget
Mm-hmm.
so that our budget is informed by what uh strategic objectives we have.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, I'm actually, that's 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 been a uh a nice rewarding process.
It's been-
It's good to hear everybody's uh ideas, different thoughts, so it's good. Uh do we have anything on budget?
No.
Okay. All right.
No, because we're waiting for the strategic plan, I'm just kidding.
Right. Um
I can tell you, um administrators have put forward their budgets uh to the business office. Um and right now, we're in the process of compiling that all.
Okay.
Um I'm hopeful to have a budget presentation for next week, um but I don't wanna promise it. Um it may mean that we might need to have a special budget meeting uh to present the budget to the school committee. Uh just because February is this odd month where we don't have the, we we squash the two meetings. So otherwise, we'll have to wait till later in March and that gets a little late.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, February is always challenging because of the break and all that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's our old business. Uh we have our standing reports. I think you said that you don't have
No.
uh because we have two very uh quick meetings um today and next week. Probably we're gonna have something next week, so we're gonna skip that.
Yeah.
Uh West Street Building Committee is meeting, I don't remember the date.
I don't remember either.
But I think everything is, you know, smooth sailing
The staff did a walkthrough today.
so far, knock on the wood. Hmm?
The staff did a walkthrough today
Oh, they did, good.
because they will be moving um next Friday.
Yeah.
So um very exciting.
Well, it's 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 coming together very nicely and, you know, driving by in the evening, you see the lights uh from the
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice.
uh gym and all that, so it's it's very nice.
Mm-hmm.
It's beautiful.
It is.
I was really today.
Yeah.
The windows look beautiful.
I, you know what, I have to tell you, I was amazingly surprised. I did not expect the rooms to be as large as they are.
Yeah.
It it I I'm just overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I've been in the school system probably since it started. No, but at West Street, I mean, I thought those rooms were huge. And I'm sure once furniture is in there, they won't look as big, but they are.
Oh, yeah.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
It's absolutely gorgeous.
They look like classrooms, but they feel like home, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, it's nice.
Very welcoming.
Yes. And the windows have window seats and reading nooks and just the way the cabinetry is built for the students
Mm-hmm.
to hang their coats and book bags and um very welcoming.
Yes. And the little cubbies, like the little mailbox sections in the rooms and
Mm-hmm.
it's just, it it's absolutely beautiful.
It's awesome.
I can't say enough.
It's good to hear.
Yeah.
Well, I c- I can't wait to, w- we saw it when it was uh really under construction, you know, it was all uh
Mm-hmm.
It's getting close.
steel and cement, so hopefully soon we can see the whole thing.
Yeah.
In fact, can we, can we have a walk-through?
We're going to, so once the students are in and have sort of temporarily set up their shop, um we plan to have an open house and let the students run um and do tours. Um so it'll be probably a couple of weeks after we have teachers and students in. And then we'll have um an open house where students will
This is
um walk through.
After the the February break or are you talking about September?
After the Yeah. Yep. No, after the February break, so probably mid-March.
That's
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'm uh kinda, you know, tongue in cheek, but I'm hoping that all the renovations that we're gonna have in East Meadow will be very nice as well because all those students who will see the new building, they're gonna and the teachers, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they're gonna have to go back. Um Policy Subcommittee
We're meeting next Monday?
Meeting next Monday.
We are?
That's it.
The twelfth at six o'clock.
Did we all? Did we approve that doodle?
I think so.
Is is it gonna be a quick-
I put it in my, it was supposed to be a quick meeting, like from six to six thirty, right before school committee regular, I mean.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Like quick, yeah.
Yeah. So the reason why I went out of order because uh Mike actually has uh a longer presentation
I can be-
or uh feedback from the collaborative?
Yeah, um so we met uh last Wednesday. Um a few things, um CBWE, the uh it's Community Based Work Experience, they've made a decision to close that down. There was only three students left in it and they were from out of the district anyways, they were not they're not part of the membership. Um I think it was a-
Is it is it because some districts like ours, we are starting to really focus on that type of experience in our own or?
I but they didn't really get into it, I'm not sure they really know, to be honest with you, they just know that they're not getting the students.
Mm.
Um and I they they were talking about the possible closure of it um back in the early summer, but then they had a phone call, I guess, from uh the community that's that's was sending the one student left, they were gonna be they'll be adding two more, but it was not, it was not a community that's part of of the collaborative.
Oh, okay.
And and I think they're finding that the administration costs of running that with everything else were starting to get a little bit overwhelming. Um but then in the next sentence, they also said that because they're closing the CBWE that the HECC Academy rates um are gonna be going up um a little bit.
Can you tell us what HECC Academy is? I I know it, but you know, so.
Um I I'm I don't know what it stands for off the top of my head.
Oh, it's the old name, the Hampshire
Educational
Educational Collaborative, yeah.
Um and that and that's in Northampton for for the kids around the on the spectrum that need a little bit of it more uh more help. But those rates are going up a little bit. Uh that was voted on, I don't know if you want me to give you the numbers, I don't know if we have anybody enrolled in that in this town.
I don't, I don't know.
Um
I think we have one.
Yeah, we
But okay, so the the rate, the annual rate is going to five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for the tuition. Um
It will be that amount?
Yeah. I don't know what it is, I don't know what it is now, they didn't give me that that information.
Oh, okay.
Um the summer rate goes up to five thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars for the for the tuition. And again, I don't know um what the rate is for for that from last year. I don't know if anybody has that information here.
It might be helpful to have Carol come and discuss
Yeah.
the increases to tuitions because um the state's approved two sets of tuition increases um mid-year. Um and then um I I think it's important that people understand um what some of the pressure is in the special education, um particularly in tuitions, so.
Can we find out how many students, ob- obviously should we have all that information, right?
Yeah, she will, yeah, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um then they talked about, um we had a nice um a really nice discussion about from from Spiffy um strategic, starting an initiative for families and youth coalition, they they nicknamed it Spiffy. Um really
Pretty smiffy.
Yeah, they they did a really nice talk about uh the backup products, vaping, um things like that
Mm-hmm.
and the the struggles they're seeing across the schools and 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 some of the things that they're they're trying to get out there across to all the schools so we can have a consistent approach. Um if I can get the 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 slides that they gave us, I could I could put it up on the shared drive if if anybody wants to look at it. Um mine, you know, my paper copy, I handwrote a lot of bad notes across the top of this old one. But anyways, that was a really eye-opening, you know, conversation we were having there. Um and then again, they went into the updates on uh CCAT and the OTC. Um it seems like they they've changed course just a little bit. Um they they developed some some technology to help them track some of the things that they thought they knew a little bit better and it's fine and they're finding out that they really didn't have the data they were looking for. So that's taken a little bit longer than um they anticipated. I did I did ask a question and I think they took it wrong. Um but I asked about um if they had if they were doing it in-house, because it seemed like they were or if they had reached out to try to get a consultant in. Um simply because I know from my background, the consultants uh can really help you gather a lot of that data really fast and help you analyze it faster. But that's really um the crux of the meeting. They did have assign a conflict of interest statement specific for the collaborative. I guess they found out that it was required, so um there was there was a discussion on that from the last meeting we had because they wanted us to sign it. And somebody's like, well, we're not sure, so they brought it back. Um and that's 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 really all the updates.
That's good, so the tech, are they are they increasing their technology portfolio or?
They're really trying to revamp um what they're doing with those two things. Um with those with the OTC and the CCAT with with regards to um, I guess, just trying to modernize it is the way the way I take it with with what they're explaining. Uh they're trying to make sure that they got the right uh the right plan around uh, you know, the people who are doing it, the specialists and and their rate, are they, you know, um actually being charged right uh versus, you know, the time they spend with the kids versus the time they spend doing the paperwork and uh then the family consults around all that. So they're really looking at all of that and um trying to get back to a structure that that really works well. And um also plan for um really what what it seems like people need and what they're utilizing them for to kind of zero in and on out a little bit better, which is why they needed to take a step back and relook at what they were getting for data.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that back. It's actually interesting, the collaborative, I still think that there's a lot of potential there. I mean, when you have almost all of the uh school districts from uh Hampshire and Franklin Counties, you know, forty school districts, you would think that there would be a lot more um that each district can use. But I know that some of their services and, you know, I, when I was going to the meetings, I told them that it wasn't really as cheap as or as inexpensive as you would expect. And we can't we can't really use their services.
Mm-hmm.
Um so hopefully they find a way to to do that.
It does get into some very lively discussions, so.
Yes, yes. Yeah, great characters. Um thank you for that. Do we have an executive session? We don't. Okay, so that, well, kinda, you know, one of those record evenings, I guess. Uh that concludes our uh open session, is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, have a good evening.